Why am I a little bit nervous? Anybody else?
You are on the internet now. You got nervous at the exact time you went live.
Timing's always been good.
Jason, I'm ready whenever you are.
Okay. I'll wait for, till my clock says it's 5:30, so we're not, uh, we're not jumping the gun.
Everything's ready, Kathy's ready, the stream and the conference, or the council room's going, and you're live on the internet, so whenever you want to start.
All right, well, good evening, it's April 1st, 2020, we're scattered throughout Washington City. Like to open this meeting. Present is, I'm Jason Smith, I'm the chair, staff member Drew Ellerman, Jason Hanson, Commissioner Jason Hanson, now it's bouncing around, Commissioner Monty Holly, staff member Brandon Wright, Commissioner Brian Musso, Denise Bullock, Washington City staff, Jeff Starkey, the city attorney, Chris Staley, the member of the city council that is representing the commission, Kathy Spring, also a member of staff, and Commissioner Van Fitzomfoe.
Don't forget Rick.
Don't forget Rick Henry, how come you're not showing up on my, oh there, they jumped you, so, and Rick Henry as well, Commissioner Rick Henry. To begin the meeting, before we get started, I'm going to read this to the public, if anyone is streaming, whoever is, says, "On the agenda, there are five public hearings scheduled this evening. The city has been open, receiving public comments for this meeting since last Friday, March 27th, and will continue to receive public comment until the close of the public hearing for each agenda item. The public has been able to submit their written comments through a link on the agenda which was electronically posted. For this and future public hearings, we would encourage the public to monitor the agendas on the city website, as we will be only taking comments in the manner. No verbal public comments are being taken. Once tonight's public hearing are closed, the city recorder will read all the comments into the public record. If you have questions or comments about any of the process of procedures, you can contact Kathy Spring in our community development department. We thank you for your patience, as we figure out how to operate in the new world. However, we are committed to the mayor's direction of keeping the business of the city going. We remind everyone that all planning, zoning, and building services are functioning, and we are processing those requests as quickly as possible. So if you are streaming, please, whether we are at your item or not, if you have comments, please get those entered in, so that we can continue the meeting, and that you get your comments in without, without us closing them on you, because if they're received after the close of the public hearing, they will not be part of the public comment. We also ask for everyone's patience in this, we're all a little new to this, so we're doing the best we can, and we hope that everything works with, with the, with all the agenda items. With that, we'll begin the meeting with Commissioner Musso is going to give us our invocation, we will forego the Pledge of Allegiance, as there is no flag in the area that we can all see, so Commissioner Musso.
Our heavenly father, we humbly bow our heads before you this evening and give thee thanks for this opportunity we have to meet as a planning commission in the city of Washington. We're grateful for this opportunity to serve the public in this capacity, and we would ask thee a blessing this evening, and with the technology challenges that we have, and with the ongoing concerns in the country. Ask thee a special blessing upon all those who are sick and afflicted at this time. We ask thee to please bless our nation, that we might begin to heal quickly, that we might be able to go back to work quickly, that the economy will continue to grow and do well. We're grateful for those members of the community who have given us input this night, we'd ask thee for us to consider these inputs and do those things which would be most beneficial for the city, and most beneficial for the citizens of this city, and we pray for this humbly in Jesus's name, amen.
One item before, one other item before I start the, the agenda, is the commission, as you make a motion, or as you second, please state your name, to clarify for Kathy, as she takes the minutes, that she knows who is, who is making the motion, who is, who is seconding it, and all votes are going to be roll call votes, so we will, we will, that's just a reminder for the commission. Starting with item one, we have the approval of the agenda, if there are no changes, I will look for a motion to approve the agenda.
Commissioner Holly, I make a motion that we approve the agenda for April 1st, 2020.
I have a motion by Commissioner Holly, and a second by Commissioner Henry. Vote. Commissioner Holly.
Aye.
Commissioner Henry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fitzomfoe.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Oh, and I guess I, and I, Commissioner Smith votes aye as well. Motion passes unanimously. Second item is the approval of the minutes for March 4th, 2020. Any comment, or if there is none, I would look for a motion on that.
I make a motion, this is Monty Holly, Commissioner Holly, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the meeting of March 4th, 2020, as written.
I second that. Oh, you know what, I shouldn't, because I wasn't at the last meeting.
Rick, Rick here, I second it.
Okay, the motion by Commissioner Holly, and a second by Commissioner Henry. Commissioner Holly.
Aye.
Commissioner Henry. Commissioner Fitzomfoe.
Abstain.
Commissioner Hanson.
Abstain as well.
Okay, Commissioner Musso. We'll let you vote.
Aye, aye.
Good, okay, motion passes unanimously, the two abstentions. Any, item three is declarations of abstentions or conflicts, do any commissioners have any, any abstentions or conflicts on today's items?
Commissioner Holly, no.
Okay.
Mr. Henry, no.
Commissioner Hanson, did you say no?
I did say no, I don't have a financial interest in any of the items on the agenda.
Okay, Commissioner Fitzomfoe.
No.
Mr. Musso.
No.
Okay. Item four, this is the consent agenda. Final plats for A. Consideration and recommendation to city council for Commerce Hospitality Center located approximately 954 North Commerce Boulevard. The applicant is Dean Terry.
Hey Jason, on the consent, you want to do all three of them together?
Okay.
That's in the agenda.
So we'll do it that way.
I know this is new, but I just, yeah, so just read them all out.
Okay, so the other two final plats. 4B is consideration and recommendation to city council for Bedford final plats located approximately 3940 South Washington Fields Road, the applicant is Leon Hoops. And 4C is consideration and recommendation to city council for the product economy phase two final plot located approximately 500 North, 100 East, the applicant is Craig Ingle. Do we have comments? Well, I guess I should defer to Drew on that, do you, do we want to present those?
No, actually, on a consent agenda, that's why we put them on here, unless you had questions, any of the commissioners, they can ask those, but generally, just move into requesting or asking for a motion on this item, that's what the consent, I know this is kind of new, and we didn't give you a chance to understand that, but this is just for these final plats.
All the, I guess my only question would be, all the final plats can conform to the preliminary plat that was submitted and approved prior to? No major changes?
No, everything, everything's in accordance and conforms to the approved preliminary plats.
Okay. If, if there's no further discussion, I would look for a motion to approve those, those three items.
Commissioner Henry. I would recommend to the city council that we approve items 4A, B, and C on the agenda. I don't know how to word it, Drew, that's...
No, that's good, that's well enough.
Okay.
Commissioner Holly, I second that, I've read them, and I second that.
So I have a motion, a second, Commissioner Henry.
Aye.
Commissioner Holly.
Aye.
Commissioner Fitzomfoe.
Aye.
And Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We will now go to item 5A, this is a public hearing. The public hearing is open, let me read this. So let me read the item first, sorry, a little scattered here. This is a public hearing for consideration or recommendation to city council for Brio Phase 4C and 4D preliminary plat located approximately between Rialto Parkway and Gemstone Way, and the applicant is Reed Scout. So we would like to remind everyone, you are welcome to submit in writing your comments or concerns through the posted agenda or the link for items available for public comment. It is titled Planning Commission, April 1st, 2020 Meeting Public Comment Forum on washingtoncity.org/meetings. Comments will be taken until the close of this public hearing, which will be 5:50. Drew, you're up.
Drew, you're muted.
So, no, he's, he's, uh... No, he's trying to look something up.
Okay, can everybody see the report on the screens?
Yes.
The item?
Yes.
And I'll proceed in with your, your report. The applicant is requesting approval of this preliminary plat for the Brio 4C and 4D subdivision, located approximately, as stated, between Rialto Parkway and Gemstone Way. The applicant is proposing 35 lots, and the area of coverage is 4.98 acres. The zoning designation at this particular location is the Brio Plan Community Development, or the Brio PCD. The surrounding zoning to this is open space to the north, PUD to the east, PUD and open space to the west, and PUD to the south. The proposed subdivision conforms to the approved zoning. The request meets the subdivision requirements and other city ordinances as it relates to this location. Staff has reviewed the request and recommends approval with conditions of this preliminary plat as outlined. Therefore, staff would wish to recommend that the planning commission recommend approval of the preliminary plat for the Brio 4C and 4D subdivision onto the city council, and that's based on the findings and subject to the conditions as you see in your report. Now with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that the commissioners might have on this proposed preliminary plat.
How many, how many lots are in 4C, and how many are 4D?
Looks like there's 17.
17.
On the one, and then, which would make the remaining 18, then in the other, so it's just one lot difference between C and D.
I see 16 and 19. 17. What am I missing, guys? Oh, these two down at the end.
You gotta look on the far.
18 and 17, yeah, I'm sorry, 531 and 532. Okay.
Okay.
17 and 18.
Yeah, there's 17 on the right of the screen, and 18 on the left of that dash line down the middle of the plat.
Right.
Now, just for your reference, this is getting us finally closer and closer to the proposed Washington Parkway, which if you see the North Arrow on your, your screen in your plat, that's roughly the, where the Parkway will be going.
So they probably have one more future phase, or, I mean, one for all homes, and then...
There's townhomes, yeah, proposed townhomes, they haven't come yet, but that's what's part of the, the PCD is a an area set aside for townhomes, and that's that area up there.
Drew, I have a question, on lot number 532, that lot is awfully small by the time you put in 25-foot setbacks on two sides of it, isn't it?
No, they have adjusted setbacks in this Brio PCD. So they'll, they, I think in this particular, these units are the small patio home type units.
Right.
And so I think it's just a minimum of five and five on each side, so there's 10 feet between homes.
But I'm talking, I'm talking about off the street. Don't you still have to be 25 feet back off the street?
It's 20 feet off of the street.
Okay.
But they also, I think, in here, can be a little bit closer with the livable, but the gra, I mean, the driveways have to be 20 feet.
Okay.
Is, is the applicant on the, online? I just want to make sure that he's available, I don't know, I don't really have a question for him, I just want to make sure that we've...
Yeah, Steve, can you hear us all right?
He's been texting me on this, right while we're talking.
Steve or the applicant?
The applicant, Reed Scout.
Okay. Just as long as he's aware that this is happening.
Yep. Yep.
I just got a message, it sounds like the phone connection is, Steve, our, our IS department is working on the phone connect, so hopefully they'll let us know.
You know, I don't have any questions particularly, I just, just wanted to make sure that he was available, if, if there were any questions.
Yeah, and Steve's working on that right now, hopefully he'll get it worked out, but it sounds like Brandon can text him at worst case.
Okay.
I'm in contact with him right now.
Is there any other comments? Chairperson Smith, what time did you put for the close of the public?
I said 5:50, so we have a couple minutes left.
Fine, yeah.
I guess, what are our road widths?
Uh, these particular roads are...
So this is just a standard 50-foot cross-section then on this road?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, they, they missed that when they submitted it, and so we went back, and they actually got submitted back with the 50-foot public dated on there, yep.
Hey Drew, can you comment just for a second on the, the Parkway that you talked about? Is that the, is that, that's not the Northern Corridor Parkway, is it?
Well, some people are calling it that, we, we're still calling it Washington Parkway, but that, that, it's going to be the same road more than likely, yes.
And that's where it's going to come into, right there above Brio, and then tee into the freeway where there'll be a new off-ramp, is that right?
No, this will tie in at the top end of Greenspring Drive eventually, and go down to Interchange 13.
That's what I thought, so is this going to connect then to the Parkway?
This, Brio, Brio's boundary is on the south end of the Parkway, their north boundary, they'll be responsible for building out half that road when they get to that area and develop it.
Okay.
That help answer your question?
It does, I, in my mind, I thought I, in my mind, I thought it connected or ended at exit 13, but when you said that, I thought for a second, wait a second, does it end right there? This sounds like it's just one of the exits.
It is, and, and so Main Street will tie into this at the north end, but it'll basically be going, the Parkway's going from Interchange 13 all the way to, to Greenspring Drive.
Got it, okay, thanks.
By the way, that's under construction right now.
Okay.
How are we doing on time?
We're, we're at 5:50 right now, so...
Unless anybody had any other questions for me.
No, I'm...
Okay. So Commissioner Smith, you can go ahead and close that public hearing, but then we're going to wait that minute of that lag time that we talked about.
Okay, do we want to vote on the close of the public hearing?
You have to, yeah, you have to.
Okay, so I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, Mr. Henry.
Commissioner Holly, second.
Motion is second, Commissioner Henry.
Aye.
Commissioner Holly.
Aye.
Commissioner Fitzomfoe.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously to close the public hearing, further discussion and/or a motion on...
Jason, we're going to wait?
I'm going to have, never mind, I've got to have Main Street in the, any comments.
Let's wait for a minute. Yeah, we're, this is that lag time I talked about, we're going to wait a minute. Play the Jeopardy music if you want.
Okay, this is Denise, and I'm just letting you know there were no public comments for this item.
All right. Thanks. Any further discussion and/or a motion for item 5A?
If nobody's got anything to say, this is Commissioner Holly, and I would make a motion that the planning commission recommend approval of the preliminary plat for Brio 4C and 4D subdivisions to the city council based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions.
Commissioner Henry, I second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Holly, a second by Commissioner Henry, question on the motion? If not, Commissioner Holly.
Aye.
Commissioner Henry.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Commissioner Fitzomfoe.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 6A. This is a conditional use permit, it's public hearing to consider approval of a conditional use permit C-20-02. It's located approximately 1268 East Royal Sunset Road for a daycare, the applicant is Deborah Cahoon. Once again, you're welcome to submit in writing your comments or concerns through the posted agenda or the links for items available for public comment. It is titled Planning Commission, April 1st, 2020 Meeting Public Comment Forum at washingtoncity.org/meetings. Comments will be taken until the close of the public hearing for each item. At this time, I had to open that public hearing, and we will close the public hearing at 5, well, let's close it at 6:05.
Make sure my mute was off. Got to remember to do that. Thank you, as for the report for the commissioners, the applicant is requesting approval of a CUP to operate a daycare facility out of her home. Again, this is located at 1268 East Royal Sunset Road. The daycare will run from 8:15 a.m. to 4 p.m., Monday through Thursday, and on Fridays, it will run from 8:15 to 1:30. The applicant is requesting a number of eight children to be approved for this daycare facility. The home will be required to be inspected by the building department and fire department, and given approval for both on this proposed use, if you so move this forward. The daycare will be held in the home in a specially designated area shown on the attached exhibits, and let me find that particularly for you to put on the screen. Can everybody see that, okay? The childcare area highlighted out in green?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. The daycare will be held in the home in this particular area, with a deck area fenced off in the back of the home for outdoor recreation time, and a drop-off and pickup plan will need it to be in place to mitigate any traffic congestions or concerns. Staffs reviewed the request, and if the building and fire inspections are approved, and the drop-off and pickup is satisfactory, then staff is recommending approval with conditions as outlined below. Therefore, sorry, I shouldn't have hit the wrong Zoom. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve, again, this is yours to approve or deny, C-20 at-02, allowing for a daycare facility at 1268 East Royal Sunset Road, based on the findings and subject to the conditions that you see in your report. And I'll be more than glad to hear, answer any questions you may have pertaining to this requested CUP.
Commissioner Henry here. I have a concern. The back part is considered a play area, and it is not finished. Went up and looked at it yesterday, or day before, I guess it was. I don't know how the rest of you feel, like, the, the deck area upstairs is fenced, and I assume they're using it to begin with, but I didn't understand when she wanted to start this.
So is that a question, or just your concern, Rick? Because I share some concerns with this backyard. Those rocks next to that little plastic car look like a real hazard.
It looks like it's retaining area.
Yeah, but there's that, those rocks are sharp, pointy, somebody, I don't know, the ages of these kids, I think, is four, four to eight, I think I read. I did a lot of research on this lady's certificate. That CDA is legitimate, recognized around the world, pretty much. And her resume seems legitimate, but I do have concerns with that backyard, and whether or not they'll be allowed, or have any, even an accidental access to that second deck.
Well, as I understand it, the second deck is where she plans on... If you go to, let me look here a minute.
While you're looking, Commissioner Henry, Commissioner Smith, we do have the applicant on the phone, if we did want to ask her if just the... we do have the applicant on the phone if we did want to ask her if just the play area, because if she's just limiting it to the upstairs deck, then I think that takes care of all your concerns down below, wouldn't it?
Uh, yeah, except I don't like the kids up there on that upstairs deck. One of the pictures shows a gate on that upstairs deck, on that picture that you're showing, Drew. There is a gate right there. Looks to me like they'll have, in the future, they'll have a stairway. But I have some serious concerns about that gate and the height of this of, of the, of the perimeter there, that, that fence around that second deck. I, I just, I don't know. I, I've seen kids climb higher.
Again, Commissioner Smith, she is on the phone. If you wanted to invite her in to answer maybe those questions, I'm not, how you want.
You bet. I'd like to ask those questions, the concerns that the commission have.
Deborah, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
So did you hear the questions, the concerns?
Yes, about the play yard.
Yeah.
The reason, okay, so now I have stairs. They have put the stairs on there. The reason why we use the deck is when it was muddy, because we can't play in the mud. And so we use the deck when it is muddy. Where the camper is that he was referring to and that retaining wall, there is a patio there. I would say it's like a twenty by eighteen patio, and the kids play there. And then they don't have to play where the camper is. I just need them to play there when it's muddy.
Okay, so is she gonna finish the backyard then?
Yes, as soon as, yeah, the backyard will be finished. And we are planning on getting some bark back there. In my daycare that I moved from, that's what we had for ground cover was bark.
Deborah, I, this is Commissioner Holly. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, um, I, I can see you're just moving in and you're just getting your stairway and stuff, but all of that furniture on the, on that patio, that looks like a hazard to small children to me, too. What's, what are you gonna do with that stuff?
Well, I have to be, if the kids are outside, I have to be outside. So that's just pretty much where I sit while the kids play. They do not get to be outside when I'm not outside. That's state rules. So they do, so the patio or the furniture's there. I mean, I can pull the furniture away so they couldn't climb on it and grab onto the railing. If it needs to be moved away, I can do that. That's just where I sit while the kids are out there playing.
Yeah, I, I realize. This is Commissioner Holly again. I, I read your resume and I Googled CDA and, and this all looks, pardon my expression, but it looks legit to me. I'm just concerned, kids will be kids. You've done this for years. That railing just looks like an accident waiting to happen. Some of those rocks back there, that little retention wall by that camper, kid goes ahead or into one of those, he's gonna split his noggin or split his lip or worse. The stairs, okay, good, the stairs are there now, but that's a, that's a fall hazard. I just, I, I need you to tell me what you're gonna do to, to prevent these kids from being, I realize your liability and all of that. I understand. What are you gonna do to keep these kids from getting hurt? You're just one lady. There's eight kids.
For twenty-eight years, I've never had any child go to a hospital because it's not like they have a free-for-all when they're in the play yard. We still have things that we do. It's not like, it's not like parents who go, go outside and go play. When you have a childcare, you're always know where all the kids are. You always know what the kids are, and we take activities out. When the kids are on the deck, right now, there is a racetrack, and there's building blocks, and there's stuff like that. It's never a free-for-all. They have activities. We do, have been doing chalk. We do painting outside. That's the activities that we do outside. Almost the same things that we do inside is just all activities. Everybody participates in the activities we do. We'll get balls out and we'll all bounce balls. I have a little basketball hoop. We all play basketball. It's never a free-for-all. Just send the kids outside and go play.
Appreciate, Commissioner Henry, I appreciate your input. Thank you.
Just on, on pickup, are you staggering the pickup at all, you know, like, try to maintain, just to maintain traffic flow so we don't have a backup of cars and, and is that kind of what, you have a plan for that or? Or will have a plan?
The most vehicles I ever have is two. All of mine is staggered. Mine kids come at eight fifteen, eight thirty, nine o'clock, and ten o'clock.
Okay.
And then pickup is anywhere from three o'clock to four thirty. They all don't come at the same time, and they all don't leave at the same time.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Musso. You're, you were talking in the, in the past tense as saying that the kids have gone out and played. I mean, are you already using this as a facility or no?
Yes, I just barely moved in and got state license, just barely. I have to get state licensed and then do city. I was supposed to do the city last, last time you guys canceled, and so that was when I got my state license also.
Okay, so you're operating now currently?
Yes. I don't have very many kids because of coronavirus, but yes, I have like two.
Deborah, this is Commissioner Hanson. Could you tell me a little bit about eight students, if you will? I think that was the maximum. Is there a reason for that number or have you had that number before?
That's a, that's a state licensing rule, eight.
Okay. And you said we. Do you have people that help you when you have kids over?
No. Well, I do right now because I have two teenage daughters that are being at home, but.
Okay. Drew, I had a question for you. The approval of this tonight, does it come with an expiration? Or is it something that she just has to revisit periodically, or how does that work?
No, once you get a CUP, it, it actually goes with the property, not the person. You know, I mean, in essence, so it's there. We just always make sure that they, they give us a current state license all the time so that those are renewed, I think, every year. We just have them bring us a copy every year, the current one, to keep on file with the conditional use permit.
If for some reason at all, something happened to one of the children, the city would not, I mean, I'm sure she has liability insurance, but the city is not liable, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Deborah, did you guys build this house with daycare in mind, or is it a track home that was already built?
This is, we built this house with daycare in mind. Same with the house that I bought on eight two nine Cantera Drive that I just moved from.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
This is Commissioner Holly again. On your Utah Department of Health license for family daycare, the expiration date is this May, just in about three months, May thirty-first, twenty twenty. What happens then? Obviously, you go back to get your license renewed.
I have already renewed the license. I have a new copy of a new license now because just like with the city, I had to, I had to renew at this location also with the state, so I do have a new updated. It doesn't expire until March of twenty twenty-one now.
Okay, and that was my second question about this South Cantera address. Because this license doesn't apply to that address and will expire soon. So you have a new license with that address, and that doesn't expire until twenty twenty-one. Is that correct?
Correct, correct, with this address on it.
Deborah, I'm not picking on you, but I'm, I'm just, you know, we all love the kiddos. We just wanna make sure they're in good hands and they're gonna be safe. We're not picking on you.
That's just fine. In fact, I would rather you guys do this more often than all of the people in all of the neighborhoods who watch kids and do not get city business licenses and do not get state licenses. There's a lady in town by Jeff Turek who rented a house and has kids coming there and is not licensed or city business licensed. So this doesn't bother me one bit because this means the kids are safe.
Well, I don't know that that lady is our dealing at all, but if it's a concern for you, I would, I would take some action, make sure those kids are safe. But that's just my, that's my personal feeling. I don't have any more questions for Deborah.
Any other questions for the applicant? Or? Public hearing time. Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
I wanted to tell her thanks for putting up with the situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey Deborah, this is Commissioner Hanson again. Really quick, I'm looking at the pictures. It looks to me, and I might have it wrong, I can't tell on the pictures. Are the kids able to access side yard or they can get up to the front yard if they wanted to?
No, we have a chain link fence that is a four-foot-high chain link fence that we put in before the pictures was taken. We just put it in when we moved. So there's a chain link fence that blocks that, where that toy camper is.
Yeah.
All the way across.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Thanks.
Deborah, this is Commissioner Van Fitzon-Fu. When do you plan on finishing the backyard, the play area?
Um, the house that we just moved from is for sale. As soon as coronavirus dies and people start looking at houses again, we're hoping that sales in the backyard will be put in right then.
Are you designing that backyard to be kid-friendly? I'm sure you are, correct?
Yes, yes.
Any other questions for the applicant? If not, our public hearing time has, has passed, so I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close that public hearing. This is Commissioner Holly.
Second, Commissioner Henry.
A motion is second. Commissioner Holly, and all in favor, Commissioner Holly?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fitzon-Fu?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Public hearing is, is closed. We'll give, give it a minute to see any public comment. We remind Deborah to stay on the line as we, until the, till everything has been voted on, and if there's any additional comment here.
Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Denise, city recorder. At this time, there are no public comments that have been made on this item.
Okay, so no public comments. Commission, further discussion. I, I think, I commend Deborah, I think she's, she's answered her questions and was very straightforward with us on, on some things. And appreciate that. I also commend the commission to look into this and make sure that we're, make sure that we're keeping kids safe. Any other comment or, and/or motion?
This is Commissioner Musso again. I'm a little frustrated with the fact that, now granted, we've been, we didn't do this two weeks ago, but that the individual just went ahead and started her business without having approval from the city. You know, I mean, I don't mean to be a jerk about it, but, but that's a little frustrating when we're trying to adhere to the rules. And that's my only comment.
Well, I, I think she was running a daycare at her previous house, and she was maintaining those same people. There's gonna be a little bit of lag there. I understand your concern, but there, there will be a little bit of lag there to get the application and everything through. And at the same time, we don't want to leave the kids without any childcare at all. And so I, I do understand that. But I guess we can let the applicant answer that. If she's still on the phone.
Deborah, are you still there? Sounds like we lost her, Commissioner.
There you go. Now you're on.
All right, are you there?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, I cannot, I can't tell my four school teachers, my police officer, and my nurses who have to go to work. I couldn't tell them. I'm sorry, the city didn't let me have my meeting. Don't go to work for two weeks until they let me have another meeting. That would be four school teachers, a police officer, and a nurse out of work for two weeks, waiting for me to wait for the city to have their meeting. So yes, I did watch their kids.
I'm sure they appreciated, Deborah, and I'm sorry we had to put you in that position, but this coronavirus has been a terrible inconvenience and, and more than that to so many people. And I'm sure that those, I'm sure that those parents appreciate you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? And/or a motion?
These, on a conditional use permit, this is not recommendation to the City Council, is it?
No.
Oh, this is you. Okay.
Drew, this is Van. So it sounds like Deborah has, you know, she's done this before. It's because she's moving to this new location that she kind of has to get everything, I guess, in order again. Is that correct?
Correct. As I stated earlier, a CUP runs with the property, not with the person. And they're intended to be that way, so for CUP at her old property, you know, can't be taken with her to her new property. So that's why we're here tonight.
And it, it sounds like she has years of experience already. Correct.
Yep.
This is Commissioner Hanson. I should have asked her this earlier. I'm kind of curious, the more we talk about it. Was her old property a two-story house, out of curiosity?
Is my house?
Your previous, the place previously operated?
Yes, it was a two-story.
Cool. I wish you the best. Thanks for, I mean, yeah, thanks for coming. It's just, yeah, that's it. It's good.
I'm still looking for a motion or a on this.
Commissioner Henry, I motion that we approve a conditional use permit number C dash twenty dash oh two located at approximately twelve sixty-eight East Royal Sunset Road for a daycare center. Applicant is Deborah Cahoon.
Commissioner Hanson, I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second.
Can I, can I just butt in for a second?
Yes.
Can you just amend your motion there, Commissioner Henry, to can, to include all the conditions?
Oh, great. Uh, I'll amend the motion to include all conditions as mentioned in the, uh,
Report.
Report.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson, do you still second that with the amendment?
I do.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Um, Commissioner Henry?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holly?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzomfo?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Deborah.
Good luck, Deborah. God bless you.
Uh, item sixty is also a conditional use permit. Um, it is a public hearing to consider approval of a conditional use permit C dash twenty dash O three for an awning setback relief located at approximately twelve sixty-six East Washington Dam Road. The applicant is Robin and Brian Stratton. Um, once again, I will read this. You are welcome to submit in writing your comments or concerns through the posted agenda or the link or the link for items available for public comment. It is titled Planning Commission, April first, twenty twenty, Meeting Public Comment Forum on washingtoncity.org slash meetings. Comments will be taken until the close of the public hearing of each item. Um, we will, do we need, well, I've been taking ten minutes. Do we need ten minutes on this one, do you think?
Probably not. This one should go a bit, uh, simpler.
Let's, uh, do six oh five on this one, if we're still discussing.
Six twenty-five.
Six twenty.
Six twenty-five, sorry. Hey, I'm still here. I, I'm just trying to get out of here quicker, I guess.
Thank you. Um, as I, I pulled up on your screen, this is kind of the drawing, the rendering from the applicant, um, but I'll proceed. The applicant is requesting approval of a CUP for reduction of side yard setbacks and on the interior lot lines. The request is from the required ten-foot, um, sorry, that should not be rear, should be side setback to a proposed one-foot setback for awnings to be constructed for shade area for this existing child and daycare facility off of Washington Dam Road. There are two locations, as shown as you see in your exhibits. Those are the red hashed areas. Um, the applicant is wishing to place these two awning structures on this light industrial zone property. The industrial zone allows for relief of setbacks in the side and rear yards if approved through a conditional use permit. The new awning structures would be required to meet the standards as outlined in the city adopted building and fire codes. Staff feels if those can be met, then the request could and should be granted. Therefore, staff would like to recommend that the planning commission approve C dash nineteen, I'm sorry, that's probably the wrong conditional use permit twenty dash zero three. I apologize for that. Allowing for the reduction of side yard setbacks as shown in the applicant's attached exhibit uh, from the ten-foot down to a one-foot, um, setback as it relates to this particular property. So we, uh, if you, I, let me try to see if we have, I'm pretty sure I have a copy of the awnings themselves, I thought.
I thought I saw a picture.
I think they're in these pictures here. Sorry, they're a little sideways, but, um, you can see the type of awning. They're just using it off of the home, but it's the same type of awning that you see in the, your photo. Simple photo, and they have to be built out of non-combustible, uh, fire-rated materials going to within that close to the, the property line, so. Um, but here's a, maybe a better picture, and again, apologize for the side looking view, but I think you tilt your head a little bit, you'll see kind of what, what the proposal is there. That's what the awning will look like, and then the site plan, you saw where the location is. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have on this request for, uh, relief on setbacks uh, for this daycare facility. Again, I hope you know which one. I think it's called Home Away From Home on Washington Dam Road there.
It's right across the street from the public, uh,
Public Works Yard.
Yeah, right across the street. Nice facility.
And this is just next to the property line there? Or next to the street?
It's next to the interior property line. It, you know, if I go off of, I'll bring that back up here. You can see Washington Dam Road. I'll leave it in the small version here. You see Washington Dam Road. Let me get a, let me get a thing here. I'll point to it. You can see with my red arrow, that's Washington Dam Road. Then this is Thoroughbred Road. And so, uh, the awning is back off of both streets, back here on the interior part of the lot.
Okay. I misunderstood. It was not making sense to me. I misunderstood when I read through it, so apologize.
That's fine.
Commissioner, I have just a quick question. The pictures looked like they were aluminum. Is that correct?
Um, I, Steve, do we have the applicant on the phone?
Yes.
Yes, so that, so you're on the phone and yes, they are aluminum?
Um, we're gonna, we're gonna have Stuart awning put them up, and so we can, we can make them whatever we need them to be.
Okay, well, I just need to make, just was curious.
Well, that, that's one of the
Oh, yeah, I'm
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, aluminum, aluminum is what they'll be.
Okay.
Yeah, for any of you commissioners that aren't familiar with this facility, it's brand new, it's probably a year old. Um, those awnings are going to be built on south-facing walls. Um, just brutal during the day. The sun just pounds on that, on, on that side of their facility. So just FYI, that's all south-facing where they're putting those awnings.
This is Commissioner Hanson. From the pictures that I'm looking at, or like the satellite view, it looks like the light industrial, uh, to the southwest of this and the south of this are not up to the, like, they're far away from the, the fence line, if you will. Is that a correct version of what's there today? There's not a building essentially?
No, there's not a, it's not a building. There's a storage yard. Um, the stucco company and the drywall company, they just use that for their storage stuff.
Okay.
Yeah, Commissioner, uh, Hanson, on the other side is, uh, some horse stalls and just little fenced-in area where people keep their horses.
Okay, but there's no other structures within
No.
fifteen feet from the fence?
No.
No, there's nothing out there.
All right, thank you.
Other questions for the applicant?
Public hearing has, uh, gone over there, Commissioner Smith.
Um, if there are any other questions for the applicant, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Commissioner Holly?
Commissioner Henry, second.
A motion and a second. Uh, Commissioner Holly?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzomfo?
Aye.
Uh, motion passes unanimously. We'll wait for a minute, um, where if we have further discussion, we can continue to talk amongst ourselves. That was a Saturday Night Live reference, but.
I appreciate you guys. Thank you for letting me do that.
Thank you, Robin. Thanks for putting up with us.
Yes, stay on the line.
Thank you.
We have to wait for public comment.
Oh.
And that was just a
Okay.
public hearing, so stay on line for just a few minutes.
As I prepare this, can we confirm that it is item C dash twenty dash O three, that that is correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, on your agenda, that's what it is.
All right, hold off on any motions until we make sure there aren't any public, there isn't any public comment. Or if there is, we can all have a, we can all talk about it.
Did that aerial show up on your screens now that I brought in, the Washington aerial?
Yes.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, that's, yeah, okay.
Chairman Smith?
Yes.
This is Denise, the City Recorder. You have no public comments on this item.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Denise.
So no public comments, uh, discussion amongst the commission and or a motion.
I have no discussion. This is Commissioner Hanson. I'll make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit on item C dash twenty dash O three for reduced side yard setbacks on interior lot lines located approximately one-two-six-six East Washington Dam Road, applicant Robin and Brian Stratton.
Commissioner Holly, I second that motion.
Okay, did you say with conditions? I, maybe I missed it.
I apologize. With conditions set in the report.
You still second that, Commissioner Holly?
I do, yes, second.
Okay. Uh, motion and a second, Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Holly?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Commissioner Fitzomfo?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. There you, all right, so item seven. Is that supposed to be seven A? So seven B on my agenda. This is a zone change.
Seven A, yeah, seven A, sorry.
Okay, no problem. This is a zone change. Um, it's public hearing for consideration and recommendation to city council. Uh, zone change request Z dash twenty dash O four to change from open space to R one-ten, single-family residential minimum, ten thousand square foot lots located at approximately uh, east of Washington Vista, Phase three A and three B. The applicant is First National Investment LLC. Um, we will open the public hearing. Uh, it's six thirty. Uh, we would like to be able to close that public hearing at, say, six thirty-six. I will read this for the record. Uh, you're welcome to submit in writing your comments or concerns through the posted agenda or the link for I, items available for public comment. It is titled Planning Commission, April first, twenty twenty, Meeting Public Comment Forum at washingtoncity.org slash meetings. Comments will be taken until the close of the public hearing for each item.
Hey, thank you, uh, Chairperson Smith. I'll read the report now on this proposal. The applicant is requesting approval to change the zoning of approximately four point one-seven acres located at approximately five fifty west and twenty-one hundred north. Requested change from the current zoning of open space to a proposed single-family residential, ten thousand square foot, for the R one-ten zoning designation. They are seeking this R one-ten for the purpose of developing the four point one-seven acres into future residential development, adding it to the existing, uh, Washington Vista Development Project, uh, at the far end of town on that north end of the Greenspring Drive. Surrounding zoning of the parcel is open space to the north, which is the, uh, reserve area. Um, also, um, east and south, which is property owned by Sitla, and R one-ten to the west, um, again, which is part of the Washington Vista subdivision development there. Staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend approval of Z dash twenty dash zero four for the zone change request from open space to the proposed single-family residential, ten thousand square foot minimum, R one-ten zoning district onto the city council. That's based on the findings. Um, so with that, I'll be glad, it, is the exhibit showing fine? It's the green area um, that they're seeking. You can also see the vicinity area over here, and again, it's on the far north end of town. Again, everything on the north end of this project proposes the, the Tortoise Reserve Habitat. And then Sitla owns everything to the east. And, um, hopefully that answers that, but it's, are there any questions I can answer for the commissioners?
Uh, Commissioner Holly, uh, Mr. Ellerman, the, that Northern Parkway, Commissioner Hanson, or we're calling it the Washington Parkway, that goes up there real close to that, doesn't it?
Well, you can see it. Um, let me get my little fancy arrow here. This, this area that I'm just gonna point to several times
Oh, yeah, yeah.
is the Parkway.
Okay.
Now, that bend that you see, as I'm following with my arrows.
Right.
That, that will be the northern corridor, or I like to refer to as the Washington Parkway.
So this is Vista three A and three B, so just, uh, to the north of it then, okay?
Yes.
Gotcha. And it's also that light tan line on that other little picture. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Then it comes right back down Greensprings, huh?
Um, well, it still heads, you know, where my arrow is right here.
Yeah.
Probably go another, um, quarter mile. That's where you'll hit the Greenspring.
Right.
Washington Parkway T-intersection.
Right. Interesting, okay. Thank you for that explanation, Drew.
Um, and then we have an additional, we have the hundred, there's a wash there. And that's the hundred-year floodline there, the, the dash line, and then they've done a little bit of a additional setback off of that. Looks like for grading purposes and
That's correct.
everything else.
This'll give you kind of a, sorry, it's, the direction is different. Uh, but you can see the hard dash lines or the floodplain. And then you can see the lot lines are a little bit set back off of that floodplain. Um, I'll kind of go get my spotlighter again. And, uh, there's the property line, and then I'm gonna click on, there's the floodplain line.
My god.
Okay, Commissioner Henry, I have a question, reference this map that's showing. So what I'm understanding is that section that you just pointed out to us is adding on to the property to be developed. Now, how's that accessed? What, I'm, I'm a little confused with, it looks like lot lines on here. They just extending the lot lines?
Well, this would be a proposal right now, this subdivision, you know, you see a road right here? That's tied off of the Parkway that comes up in the northern part of Washington Vista. Right now, here, this line I'm gonna highlight right there with my red arrow. Everything below my red arrow is, you know, lot, parts of Lot forty-one, two, three. Below that hard line is where the zone change is asking, so they're asking to be able to add that area so they can create lots forty-one, forty-two, forty-three on this.
Oh, okay, it, I just found it a little bit confusing, the way it was.
That makes sense, though, yeah. Here's the line already of existing R one-ten, everything up above. And then this is the area that they're proposing down here.
Okay, gotcha. Gotcha.
Drew, Commissioner Holly? Is Lot forty-one really sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty square feet?
It'd be close.
It, it is, it is.
It is. That's just over an acre, but again, a lot of it's, a lot of it's gonna be an area that's, you know, falls off, I think, elevation
Okay.
topography-wise.
Uh-huh.
So it looks like maybe up here is the more usable, the rest of it'll just be their property.
Huh, okay. So they're gonna set, where, the, the, most of these lots set pretty much above, I can see the lines. Do they set pretty much above that hundred-year floodplain?
All of them do. Property lines.
Yeah.
And, and, and in elevation, they do change as well.
That's what I meant, the elevation.
You can see all the, you can see the topography lines all along through here.
Yeah, yeah.
Drew, this, Drew, this is, um, Commissioner Musso. So those great gradient lines, how far apart are those? There's a one-foot gradient or a two-foot?
I think, Brandon, don't we make him do two? Pipe in, go ahead.
Yes, if you look down in forty-four and forty-five, you can see the thirty fifteen, and then you go over to thirty thirty right there.
Okay.
You got, you got about a fifteen foot right there with the, with the grading lines that they're showing.
So those would be one-foot lines then?
They are.
Okay. And then when it just turns solid black, that just means it's a cliff, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Straight down.
There's a lot of truth in what you said.
For Henry here, but I, cross-section. Uh, it's one, seven A Z.
Sorry, Commissioner Henry, you broke up a little.
Oh, I'm saying that the cross-sections that they gave us would probably show that to him, so he understands the, the gradient better.
I do, I understand it. Thank you, Rick.
Any other questions?
For me, Commissioner Holly.
The public hearing time has passed, so we can, I can look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, Commissioner Holly.
Mr. Henry?
I have a motion on the second. Commissioner Holly?
Aye.
Commissioner Henry? Commissioner Henry, did you?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Any?
Chairman Smith, this is Denise. We have one comment from, one public comment that's been published. It is, the, the person who submitted the comment is Aaron Langston. He lives in the Greensprings, north of I fifteen area. His comment is, "A portion of these lands were sold to the current owner by the school trust land, Sitla. The buyer emailed me on November twenty-second, twenty thirteen, said, 'I would acquire the property for the sole purpose of using it for open space. I will agree that any and all property acquired from Sitla will be, will be dedicated as open space.' Later, on January twelfth, twenty fourteen, the buyer said in a follow-up email that the lands will be set aside for open space. The subject property was always shown as open space on Sitla's master plan for Greensprings, and it appears the subject properly is shown, sorry, properly shown as open space on the city's general plan, see table two dash two of the city's general land use plan. Item two point seven, open spaces in the city's general plan identifies floodplains and major dry washes as targets for open space. Placing residential development within these areas might put an undue burden and a risk on the future owners and will diminish the, the views of the current and future neighbors. I think this request is contrary to its general plan, is in direct opposition of the reason for the land acquisition and should not be recommended for approval. Also, at this time, there are no other public comments."
Thank you. So, I guess I have a question for staff on that. That's an, I would, I'm asking, is that an agreement, that's an agreement between, on the purchase of the property, correct? So, what, what, how does that affect us? I mean, we are involved in that purchase.
Correct, and that, that's what's hard here. I understand what Sitla's point is, you know, on this, that was a, a sell that they made between those two, between Sitla and Mr. Lowe, the property owner. And I, 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 sorry, I need to slow my mind down a second. I totally understand where Mr. Langston's coming from with that agreement between the two of them, but as a property is sold and put into someone's hand, it's, I don't know if it's the city's responsibility to uphold agreements unless it was recorded, you know, maybe then it's easier to do, but like I say, I, I'm not sure, and if I may just give a little history on that, for those who have been on the commission a little while, this property at one time was zoned P U D, that Mr. Lowe at one time was gonna put a town home development here on the north end of Washington Parkway. This area was designated in that P U D when this property was purchased, as indeed part of his open space, that he was proposing for that development. But our old P U D, there was an expiration date. If you didn't start or do any, anything on the project, it reverted back to its original zoning designation. So the P U D that was approved in this area was that open space area, then expired, went back to the R one ten, this went back to the open space zone at that time, and so that's the little history on this. So I think that's where some of this, I think, then, in the beginning, the intention was to leave it open space, because it was part of that P U D open space. But time has since lapsed. Now the owner's coming in asking for this, but I do understand where Sitla's coming from, because they sold that to them at a certain price range, not at a price range that's developable property versus open space property, because they do have different dollar values.
Okay. I do have a question for Brandon with Public Works. Is there any concern about access along that wash, behind those lots?
So, in the, when they started this, they had a low, a low wash crossing, and they removed that. They were trying to put a lot on the east side of that wash. We asked them to remove that. They took that out. Right now, the access that'll be on the other side of the wash will be down lower on another set of, or another partial property that's owned, I think, believe by Sitla.
Sure.
First Nation, all the way down. If, Drew, can you go back to the one plan? Yeah, you can see how far down First Nation owns. So the access will actually fall across the wash a little bit farther down. They will be able to access that with another development. Part of the Washington Parkway project is an actual covert, box covert, that is being built right now with the Parkway.
Okay. And you feel comfortable being able to, in the event of flooding or something, you can access the wash to mitigate any concerns with the property, or do you, was there a concern there?
And I see where you're going. When these plans come in for approval, we will ask for an access point somewhere down here that we can actually get in and maintain that wash.
Yeah, I notice they do have a detention area that you might be able to maintain. They're on the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, temporary. It's a temporary detention, and they have one down farther that will be built on to.
So. Okay, I don't know if I have, those are my questions. Those are my questions and concerns. And after the comments, those are the things that I would make sure need to be addressed. Any other comment?
We're still in the public comment, is that right?
Um, I guess we are. We could close the public comment. We should close the public comment.
No, you, you did.
You did.
That's how you got in, read the record.
All right.
You closed your.
Oh, yeah, that's right. You're right, correct.
And we, you, we do have the applicant on the phone as well, and if you're interested, it's Eric with Premier Design, is also available on the phone bridge. I'd just let you know that.
So this is a discussion.
Drew, this is Mark Fonger. I'm on the line as well from Premier.
Okay. This is Commissioner Smith. Just the one, the one thing that, as you look at the preliminary plot, just make sure that we have, there's access to maintain the, the wash and to do that maintenance, if you could provide that in one way or another.
Is that private property?
Say that, please.
Well, I understand it's private, then, okay, well. Okay.
I'm just wondering, does the city actually maintain the wash since it's private property?
Well, they typically maintain it if the, if there's an issue of property being eroded away, they come in and help. So if you don't, I mean, if you wanna go private property and just go ahead and, if something happens, you take care of it. I guess that's fine, too. You can hold the liability, that's fine.
Well, no, I'm just asking the question. I mean, we're, we're more than happy to provide an access.
Well.
Into the wash. Didn't know if that's something that is regularly done or not, because this isn't really a FEMA-regulated area.
Well, and I understand that, but it's kind of been something that, that has been done in, in past option, I mean, past, past subdivisions have done it to, to provide that. And I understand that in this case, you're probably looking at very little possibility of.
Jason? Jason, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Will you pull up the cross-sections? And look at the cross-sections?
Who's on the phone right now?
That's Mark Fonger.
Okay. Which one?
I, I can see what you're saying.
Any one of them.
There's a, there's a, a giant grade, I guess, so I guess, I mean, there could be, I guess the option is you could just look at Greensprings Drive and, and not, I mean, sorry, the corridor, and that's probably a good enough access as it's nearby the corridor, and, I mean, I'm not necessarily saying that you have to, you have to provide access through those lots. I'm just saying. I'd like to.
So, yeah, I, I think, I think, Jason, there would be plenty of access there, beginning with the, um, point where the, the lots meet the wash. There, there's going to be some, some area there where the, the right away from, from Greensprings Drive, or, or, I'm sorry, Washington Parkway goes all the way down to the wash. There, there is some challenge with actually grading an access point in there, but I, I just wanted to point out really on this, that, that in areas where they're, where it's flatter, back behind those lots, there's quite a bit of distance or setback between the, the water, the edge of water, and what we propose as the toe of the slope. And it really doesn't show up well on this drawing because of the natural cliff that's there. Not something that we previously agreed upon not to disturb. So there, there are some areas where we will actually construct an engineered slope, which will be a one-to-one slope with a, a rock covering, which will act as a riprap, but it's, it's set well away from the edge of the Hundred Year Flood Plain Nine. So there will be access in some areas, but, but as you can see, accessing across, say, the rear of Lot forty-eight, there really isn't much diff, much area for an access at that point, but there are, are areas on other lots where you could access behind there. And, and that'll all be shown on the preliminary plot. That'll have, it'll show non-buildable area where, where we don't propose to make any disturbance in that wash area, and then for a fairly sizable setback behind the wash.
Yeah, I realize I kinda jumped the gun here, because this is a zone change and not a preliminary plot.
Yeah, no worries, no worries.
Any other comments for the applicant? Or discussion?
I'd like to see them address the comment that came in. When I heard that, it really changed my mind about what I thought of this project. So maybe they could say something that, address that.
So, the history of the project, sorry, Eric, let me take this.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
The, the history of the project is, as stated by Drew earlier, is that this, the majority of this area was slated as open space previously when there was a P U D proposed, or a, a plan development proposed. However, it was never that the entire piece was going to be open space. That's the first that I'd ever heard, that, that email that was submitted. That was communication between the, the owner and an individual that, that we've not been privy to. However, we are maintaining the wash as open space. We are maintaining, you know, everything that's not buildable is open space, and that's based on the agreement we made with Public Works in, in looking at how best to utilize this property. I, honestly, I can't say whether or not an email from the, from the potential or the buyer of the property. I, I, I can't really address that. That's more of a legal issue, but from an engineering standpoint, we are leaving the wash as open space. We're leaving everything on the east side of the wash as open space. We're only asking for the ability to develop what is developable. Now, saying that this area is open space on the general plan, I don't think is accurate. We're not being asked during this proposal to modify the general plan, which would be required if it were. We're only asking for a zone change for something that is zoned open space, not necessarily open space in the general plan. Maybe Drew can address that more specifically, though.
Yeah, I'd actually be glad to.
Sorry. This area, this area previously, as Drew mentioned, also was approved with the P D in the same exact area as being built with homes on it. The P D approval basically mirrors this, but this is now R one ten lots on top of that instead of townhomes. So the city has already approved this area once as P D, and then it flip-flopped back to what it was, and now we're just asking for that same buildable area with the least amount of impacts to go back to R one ten, so we can complete this project. We've built Phase three A and three B with that roadway specifically where it is as the frontage to these lots, to these nine lots, to be able to finish off this project.
And, and that road was in approximately the same location in the P D as it is now?
Yes.
Drew, do you remember when it came through as a P D before, where it changed it from open space to what it was on the P D?
I don't know if I under, quite understand the question, but I'll just say that, you know, the, the P U D was the same pretty much, the edge of the P U D, let me get my arrow here, was relatively close to the same. I'm just gonna hit a few points.
Sure.
It's part of the, you know, the old approved P U D, they were going right down to this floodplain area in the P U D as well.
And that was, to just make sure I understand this right, that was approved, correct? Even though it expired, but it was approved at one point?
Yes.
Do you, do you recall when it happened? Like, was it unanimous and all that?
You're, I wish I could remember exactly, but I don't have.
Ballpark date, Drew, I wanna say two thousand and fifteen ballpark date, two thousand and fifteen or sixteen.
Yeah, I was gonna guess four, between four and six years, so I was pretty close. And I, I apologize, Commissioner Hanson, I don't remember if it was.
That's fine, I'm just curious, because I certainly, I'm sitting here thinking other, it's a good thing that my vote only is just a recommendation to the city council, and they're gonna be the vote that decides on this. So if they decided on it before, I would say there's a likelihood they're probably gonna do it again, but I sit here and look at it like, yeah, it was sold as open space, and that is a different price. And so if I was Sitla, or if I'm the benefactor of the money from Sitla, I might have a problem with that.
Well, and, and generally, I, I can't imagine that it was sold as open space. I think it was sold with the understanding that some of it was developable and only, only that that was developable would be developed and and the rest of it would be open space. I could be wrong, but, uh, that's the way these deals generally go down is that, uh, yeah, the buyer understood that he couldn't develop the whole piece because of the wash a- and so, you know, I'm sure the price, uh, showed i- in that that he would not be able to develop the whole thing. So he did get some discount, but he is also not proposing to develop the whole thing as well.
Yeah.
I, I, you know, anyway, sorry. Go ahead.
Now, it's just, for me, it's a tough one. But again, I just, it's just an opinion to city council from one of the commissioners, that's all.
Uh, Commissioner Henry here. Um, it seems to me like when that went through before, we had non-buildable rock points and so on that were up, up in there. I assume you're going to try to to, uh, hold with those same ideas that we had before. I I would guess that's where you're going with that.
Commissioner Henry, that's absolutely correct. Um, you know, it doesn't really show on this map where this is really, uh, again, where it's zone change and, and when the preliminary plat comes back, you'll see more details on what, what the actual proposal is, what the buildable area is on these lots. Um, most of those lots, uh, you know, uh, only a fraction is developable, not the entire piece.
And we will preserve them, natural, sharp, uh, rigid, vertical rock outcroppings, too, on the back of them few lots. We will not disturb them. The owner doesn't want to disturb them. It would be along Lot Forty-Eight and on the back of Lot Forty-Six is the most, is the most prominent spot.
Any more discussion? And/or a motion on this?
Commissioner Henry here. I would make a motion to the city council, uh, approval for the, uh, zone of approximate, uh, zone number Z twenty dash four, approximately four point seven acres located at approximately five fifty west, twenty-one hundred north, uh, from the current open space zoning to the proposed single-family residential ten thousand foot minimum designation with, uh, findings, uh, as listed.
Commissioner Holly, I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Um, question on motion. Uh, Commissioner Henry?
Aye.
Commissioner Holly?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Nay.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Nay.
Uh, and I vote aye. The motion passes three to two for the zone change.
Thank you, gentlemen. Stay safe out there in this crazy time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fellas.
Uh, item eight A, this is a general plan amendment. It's a public hearing for consideration or recommendation to city council. Uh, general plan amendment G dash twenty dash oh three to change from low density and open space to medium density PUD dash R planning and development residential located in approximately forty-three hundred south, seven hundred east. The applicant is Bob Hermanson. As I open the public hearing here, uh, you are welcome to submit and writing your comments or concerns to the posted agenda or the link for items available for public comment. It is titled Planning Commission, April one, twenty twenty, meeting public comment form at washingtoncity.org slash meetings. Comments will be taken until the close of the public hearing of each item. Uh, it is seven oh four. Uh, we will go till, public hearing will be open until seven fourteen.
Thank you, Chair. Um, just to read the report on this application, the applicant is asking and seeking to amend the general plan land use map in this particular area of forty-three hundred south, seven hundred east. Uh, the requested area covers approximately ninety point nine five acres. Um, the current land use designations are low density residential and open space. The applicant is seeking approval to have the land use designations changed to medium density residential. Um, and I'm going to, let me bring out my arrow, and that's this particular piece, again, to the medium density and then medium high in this particular greenish area, um, north and then, um, actually not the medium high density, they actually want to go to the PDR, I'm sorry, uh, for the green area. Uh, and this is for the possibility of developing both these areas, the whole ninety acre area into future residential development. The surrounding general plan use designations are medium density and medium high density to the north, um, open space and very low density, uh, to the east, and then low density to the west and to the south. Um, as stated above, the applicant is wishing for this change to develop it into residential development at a future date. The medium, the medium density residential in this kind of purplish area, um, they are seeking, and that allows in the medium density, the zoning designations of R16 and R18, which would be the equivalent of six thousand square foot lots or eight thousand square foot lots. Um, and then, of course, the PUD over in this greenish shade area, the PUDR would be more multi-family, um, kind of zoning. And, um, and so you'd probably see that, uh, and they'd want to carry kind of the same ratios to the property right directly above them, the medium high, which would have seven to twelve dwelling units, uh, per acre density on it. Um, with that said, staff has reviewed the request to change and finds no problem with the proposed application. Um, with these new, new designations, which they would be kind of matching up with current zoning and general plan designations to the property to the north. Um, therefore, staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend approval of G dash twenty dash zero three to amend the general plan land use map for the current low density residential and open space designations to the proposed medium des- medium density residential, this purplish area, and then the PUDR in this green shaded area, those will be the new designation sought for as outlined in your exhibits attached to your report. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions, uh, that the commissioners might have on this general plan amendment proposal.
Commissioner Holly. This looks a lot like something that Stokie Farms, uh, brought to us, um, a month and a half, two months ago, and, uh, there was some concern then about the, the roads going through down by the new high school and intermediate school and such, and am I, am I missing something here? This looks a lot like what Stokie wanted to do.
Well, it is, but these, this is the, this is the property that was the hindrance to allowing the Stokie Farms one to do it. Because th- these guys weren't ready, weren't ready to develop at that time, so the roads couldn't come across their property. These property owners have existing roads that, uh, join their property that they can tie in to. And that's the big difference between the Stokie application that didn't have the roads. These guys already have the water and the sewer and the streets of budding their property on the north and, and a little bit, you know, at least definitely on the north. Does that help answer that for you?
Yeah, that's, I, yeah, that's what I remember. Okay, good.
Wasn't, wasn't Stokie, just for clarification, weren't they asking for a higher density than what's being requested here?
Um, they were asked, yes, they, they were.
Yeah.
So.
My other question was, is there any way to know? I think I know, but I want to just ask for clarification. On the ninety acres that they're bringing to us, it says that part of it is open space. I'm assuming that that's on the ridge, but I don't want to assume that. Is, do we know what, how much of that ninety acres is actually open space right now?
Um, we have the applicant on the phone. That's probably the best thing to ask them, because I'm not sure how much of that, but it is on the ridge, I'm sure. On both, you know, both these, you can see I'm putting my arrows. You know, I'm just going to follow that ridge area. Um, so, but I, I, I understand Bob is on the phone right now. Bob, I hope you have that answer. Join in.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate your, your comments. Um, so the hillside area is approximately eleven acres um, in total from it running diagonally through the project from the northeast corner all the way down, um, segmented through where Drew's red arrow is there on his map. And so in its entirety, it's about eleven point two acres, if I remember correctly.
So are you, and that's kind of what I expected, because I know that's unbuildable. Um, is, are you planning on just going right up to the base of that then?
Yep, that's exactly right. We have no intent of touching any of the hillside. In, in, in any case, we're just going to go to the, the toe, but the lots in the current configuration that we have and the future layouts that we'll bring to you, um, are just the back of the lots go up against that hillside and we're, yeah, we're staying away from the, the hillside and we're not touching any of it.
And that included in the PUDR, you won't be, like, I'm just trying to make sure that, uh,
Correct.
If there's additional houses where the three are there, they're current.
Yes, you're, you're a hundred percent correct. In both configurations, in the PUDR and the medium density residential, the exact same configuration. We're not asking or have any intent whatsoever to touch the hillside. It's just, and, and, and it just is what it is. It's too steep.
Yeah.
And, uh, it, and from the toe of the slope all the way up, there's, um, it's just too steep to develop. And you can actually see um, that faint o- old road that goes along the toe of the hill and that green area that Drew is referencing all the way along, and then that black line that continues to the south. Um, that is basically that toe of that hill and it's um, just runs all the way through there. And from that point on, yeah, that's correct. The way the red line that's showing up there on the map, I'm not sure who's running that, but, uh, that's, uh, that is correct. And so it just will remain as it is.
Perfect. My last question is, are you planning on developing this yourselves, or are you guys trying to sell it?
Um, I think it'll be a combination, um, of, uh, several different things, but it's, um, not several, but a couple of different things. Um, it is a big piece of property. It will be a slow development process with probably, uh, two or three different builders, maybe even four builders in the project. And we will just start working our way through there. But the intent, I think you'll see um, us move forward in developing most of the property and probably fifty fifty, maybe more than that, but it's undetermined at this point, but we'll be involved from start to finish.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Henry here. Um, I assume that you're thinking about some way to handle the rainwater and et cetera coming off that grade. Are you going to run that through the properties, or are you going to put a catch, or a some at the bottom of the grade to catch it? Do you have any idea of where you're going with that?
Yeah, just in, uh, in the other Washington City projects that we've, we've dealt with in, in the recent future, and that's a great question, by the way. Um, the reason that the PUDR green space that we're referring to there, um, that that, uh, general plan line goes all the way up, up onto that space is because that future project will have its own HOA that will, will handle their own drainage, right, from the top of the slope down into the project. And then, uh, and they will be able to have, uh, their access and they'll be draining on themselves, so to speak, um, through that, and they'll be able to, to maintain and, and do that design. And then on the south section, um, that will be, uh, single-family detached lots, and those lot, the lot lines will actually go all the way up to the top of the ridge. And so they will own this, their, that property as well. And so, um, that way, we're not, we don't have a drainage issue as far, as far as draining on somebody else's property or anything like that. And so, um, that's our, that's our current plan to mitigate the, the drainage.
Okay, thank you. That's about what I suspected, but I didn't know if you'd addressed it.
Okay, Commissioner Holly. Bob, Commissioner Holly here. Um, the PUD, the HOA is going to be responsible for what again, uh, as far as drainage? Say that again.
Yeah, so the, the HOA will have, um, you know, parks and there'll be open space and for that open space will be that hillside. And so they'll own all the way up to the top of the hill, as, as will the lots on the, on the single-family detached as well. But they will be responsible, obviously, if you own it, right, you're only responsible if you drain onto somebody else's property. And so the HOA, those owners, they will be responsible to mitigate that drainage. And our design will reflect that. And we'll, we'll work closely with, uh, with Brandon and his crew there to make sure that, that, that we will go through that full process, but, um, you know, nothing out of the ordinary from any other project.
Okay, thanks, thanks for the input.
So, can we talk in our CS line that's down there, too, that's encumbered in that, um, the old roadway that's down there, you know? Yeah, obviously, we can't use that for drainage, but that, it's down there in the, in the road that you can see that faint road, Drew, but where it angles.
Can I get this, this road?
Oh, go down just one more farther, just.
Below, there's a faded area.
Where it makes a ninety-degree turn, just where your arrow was down there a little bit.
Right in here?
Right, go up a little bit to the left, to your, right there.
There.
That's about where that NRCS line runs, right there. So that's, it runs along the toe of that hill. Bob's aware of it. I mean, we all are. So it's, it's there. It's encumbered with property. They have to just in- incorporate that into their design.
Uh, this is Commissioner Moose, so I have a question. On the PUDR, are you planning fourplexes again, or not fourplexes, but, um, attached townhomes? Are they planning individual homes in a PUD style? So question is, is it going to be of a, is it going to be like an ins type of development where you have individual lots, or is it going to be the, what we've seen with everything now, these two-story townhomes that are popping up everywhere?
Two-story townhomes is the current intent, and that matches the density that, that, um, that this area would be. Basically, if you look just to the north, as Drew was referencing earlier, just to the north of this map, there, the layout's actually there that's already been approved and they're working through, is that it's, um, it's basically identical, uh, to that. It's the same, same thing. It's just consistent with the land. Yeah, you can barely see those faint lines in there. If you, I don't know if you can zoom in, Drew, maybe a click and see if you can.
Well, that's Freedom, isn't that Freedom, isn't that Freedom Village and then, um,
No, that's the, uh,
No.
Ed Burgess Development.
Crimson Park and Crimson.
Correct. That's correct. Yeah, Freedom Village is, is, is off of the map there. It's further to the north.
Oh, okay.
And so these, yeah, those are townhomes as well. So it's, it, it, townhomes, just as you're referring, yes, it's identical, the same, same densities, the same, uh, general plan designation zoning, everything. That's our intent.
Where's the entrance off of Washington Fields Road to that PUD?
So we are working with the current landowner of, of the parcel, as you can, um, and that's a great question, by the way, the, our green parcel there is, is Drew's referencing it there. Um, you can see that, um, we stop, uh, just short of Washington Fields Road. The current owner actually owns, it's a remnant parcel for them that runs from there to Washington Fields Road, and then also on the other side of Washington Fields Road. We are working with them that we will, um, be acquiring that space so that we can just connect that road. And essentially, that intersection is a master plan road that runs from there essentially down, uh, all the way across the middle of the project in a diagonal fashion, parallel to the ridge. And that'll be a, uh, that's a sixty-foot master plan road that you guys currently have as part of the city. We'll just be running it from there down to the other side of the property, uh, right through the middle of the property.
You're going to connect, that's kind of where I was going with that, is on that top right corner there, you're going to connect with, uh, Iron Horse across the street of that exit or that street there?
That's correct. You're, you're exactly right.
All right. I, I had one other ques- this is Commissioner Hanson. I had one other question that popped up. Down in the south in the project, the lots will be zoned R18, and you had mentioned something that caught my attention. They, their property line would go up to the top of the hill. Um, even though it doesn't seem likely, Drew, does that give them the right, if they bought one of those lots, to actually build as high up on that hill as they wanted to?
I'm not sure if you mean it down here.
Down the southern end. Uh, keep going, yeah, south, yes.
Well, well, I, I will tell you, you do have, and we can pass that on, Bob's here right now. Letting him know if that is a big thing that we, we, you just, I would let them know you guys expect to see some no, no build areas as part of that. If you're worried about anything, you know, and uh, just so he's aware of that in the design. If those are too steep that uh, you may not you know, be thrilled about whatever they bring in on a preliminary plat.
I personally would like to make that a condition where there is a no build line that goes up because all it's going to take is one uh, I'll say person that buys one of those lots that wants to do that, that will really throw that out of out of the visual. It would not look good at all. Going, it's very steeped, it's probably not going to happen, but just in case one yahoo decides to do it, I'd like him not to be able to.
Yeah, the problem, we, we can't put conditions on general plan amendments or, or straight zoning.
Okay.
Um, but again, this is a general plan amendment is all. You know, you're still going to get its own.
Make note of it as it moves forward.
Pardon me?
Just make a note, Commissioner Hanson, as it moves forward to remember to.
I will. When we see it again.
Yeah, make that discussion.
Okay.
But it's.
Public hearing, Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, I'm aware. I
Just uh.
Question on the on that top left-hand corner. Is that really how the property line goes? Was there a road there or something?
It is. Yes, so the uh, the original, the original intent here, if, I don't know who was involved, Drew, Drew probably remembers this. Um, there was, there's quite a story of history, but not to dive in to the weeds on it, but originally the school um, was going to go at this location and the master plan road was going to wrap in that location. Um, Bush and Gudel was involved in that at the time is why I, um, I was aware of that. Um, quite some time ago, obviously the school did not end up going there. Parcels were sold. This was what was left over and that's why that property line ended up having that big arc in it was because of that. That's the really short story, Drew, if you have anything to add, but.
No, that, that's absolutely the history of it. When the school was going to go there, the school district was adamant about having this road bend because of their plans of a high school down below, an intermediate school, and, and this whole area is going to be you know, three or four schools. And this was going to be the main road that separated their schools and the plan that they had and the design at the time that they were going to be going for. And then that never happened, of course.
Okay.
Question for Drew before we go on. Uh, it seems to me like our hillside ordinance would cover most of that. But I'm not sure, I.
Well, if they're in certain degrees, we will look at that when that comes for that time.
Okay.
And we're at a general plan stage, we're at, and then we'll do a zone change. But before they do, you know, and I'll look into that as we go. Is that we'll pull up where the general, I mean, where the hillside protection is. And they'll have to, if they're going to build anything inside that, they'll have to then go through that, that process. And, and Bush and Gudel's been through that process with through a project in the city. So they're, they're aware of those if they want to encroach in those areas with their development, so.
Okay, thanks.
Just the uh, if I could just add one, one item to that is that we're, just so, you know, I'm happy to go on record saying this, is that we, we have laid that area out and we have no intent of of going or having any buildable area in there in our current. Um, it's all concept plan, but our current planning already shows that as a no build area where we, we don't want as a developer people running up the hill either. We don't want them approaching the city. We don't want houses being built like that because it would be inconsistent. Um, with the, the neighboring lots. And so we, we are a hundred percent on board with your, with your comment and thought process.
If there's no other comment, I'd like for a motion to close the public hearing and then we can discuss.
Commissioner Henry still moved.
Commissioner Holly, second.
Motion and a second. Uh, Commissioner Henry?
Aye.
Commissioner Holly?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. We'll give it a minute here. And while we were waiting, is there any other, is there a comment that?
I have a question for Brandon.
Yep.
What is N R C S?
It's the, it's the Jason, what does it say?
The National Resource Conservation Service?
Yeah, it's, it's the pipeline that serves, you know, the gypsum debris basin, the Stuckey debris basin. Uh, all those basins, this, this lot particular line that runs right here comes out of the gypsum debris basin over towards Sugar Plum and Majestic. It runs right through the middle of Sugar Plum subdivision. And runs down through here and then heads to the river over in Saint George.
Oh, wow, okay.
It's a big line. We can't, we can't.
Pipeline or natural drainage?
It's, it's a, it's a, it, it, it's draining the, the gypsum debris basin that's out there, that big basin that's out there behind Sugar Plum.
Yeah, it's a pipe.
Yeah, it's a pipe, concrete pipe.
But that has nothing to do with the drainage of this hillside?
No, we can't use that pipe for drainage on this, in this subdivision. This is completely separate.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Brandon.
Chairman Smith?
Yes.
This is Denise, city recorder. I'm just like to report that you have no public comments for this item.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So further discussion amongst the commission and/or a motion.
I have a question. Do we have to approve both? The uh, low density and the P U D R?
You mean the medium density in the P U D R?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, the way they wrote this up, you would have to, I think.
Yeah, there's one item.
And so I have, I have some concerns in that. You know, Drew, you said the medium density allows for six to eight thousand square foot lots, correct?
Correct.
Um, I know that changes the density of the P U D R. But I am so tired of seeing these lousy townhome projects popping up everywhere. You know, I, I understand the need for quote unquote affordable housing. But if, if you went with more single-family housing, similar you know, the lot sizes that we saw on those things that we did with Barrio where they were five thousand square foot lots, you know, fifty by a hundred. Um, in my opinion, it's more desirable for a community. And, you know, it's just it, we're just getting so many of, like I said, these, of those townhomes. And, and one aesthetically, they're not good looking for the most part. And two, I just, you know, I, I think, I like the low density section or their medium density section, but even, even if we could allow them in that P U D to go to a five thousand square foot lot and make them individual homes as opposed to townhomes would be my own concern.
I agree with, I agree with Commissioner Museo, and that's why I asked if we have to approve them both uh, under one vote. So I, I, I agree with uh, with Brian a hundred percent.
Um, I have a question for, for Brandon. Have we looked at our capital facilities plan and how it's following? It seems like we have increased our densities down through here quite a bit. We is there any concern about that?
With the track, transportation?
With transportation, with, with water, with everything.
Yeah, we, 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 actually, I just started looking in this one today and um, there is some, there is some, some concern. Uh, it looks like we're meeting. Um, everyone has to do for water, you have to do a water model. Um, the sewer, we know we're going to have some upsizing of sewer out here. Road, we already got the active transportation or the, the transportation master plan laid out here. That's what, what Bob was talking about is that road that's coming through the middle of this. So what we are, we do have some challenges and I know we can get through this, so.
Yeah, I can hear him.
I can only, I only know he's talking because I can hear him from Drew's office.
You've muted, you don't want to hear him, you just muted him.
Well, Commissioner Henry, we, I mean, we, we know, we know we're getting farther out. We know that we've accommodated this partial where Drew's writing right now. We ran a storm drain through the school district property over there where the high school's at. That there, there's a sewer and a storm drain. It's over there in the Crimson, Crimson Cliff's way right now. They have to go grab that. That's to serve this partial for sewer and storm drain. We know water's going to have to loop through here, so they, they have to meet the demands of the water. If, whether we have to upsize or not. Um, so we do have utilities there. I don't know it's necessarily going to be a concern. I think it's something that, that can be worked through. We have looked ahead with this so we can get the utilities to these, these, this partial in particular.
Okay, thanks, Brandon.
Yeah.
We're still in a discussion between commissioners, is that right?
Yes.
I, I agree with the comment that was made. Um, I think it was Commissioner Musso about the, the high den, the higher density, I should say. The one thing that I don't mind about this particular project, it's going to match what we've approved to the north of it, but it's going to also tuck it in behind that mountain. And I, I personally like that. It's going to be anywhere I'd tuck it into a mountain like that. But I do understand the concern. That's why I like this is because it is going to tie into what we've approved. They're starting to build already. And it's going to be in a spot that hidden's not the right word, but it's certainly going to be sheltered by that mountain.
But it's, but it's only tucked in from the south side. You know, from the whole north side, you're not, you're going to see it. It's tucked in from, from Stuckey Farms. You can't see it from that area.
Correct.
You sure, you can sure see it from everywhere else in the valley.
Yeah, you can.
And, and again, like I said, I think if you went to you know, a P U D, but I'd be hard pressed to say it. I'd want townhomes in that thing again. You know, even if they went to a, a higher density lots, single-family lots. That, that would be a meaningful to me. Or even if you went and, and did this whole thing in six thousand square foot lots. You know, now you're going to get some people above you that's going to complain a little bit, but it's like you know, I'd still much rather see single-family houses as opposed to the, the townhomes again. You know, I think Barrio's done a real good job on making their stuff, especially on that northern end. Um, it's, even though it's fairly high density, it's attractive and they're selling it as single-family homes.
Yeah.
Now, it's just one of my, one of my pet peeves, I guess. And, and I look at it from, from a value standpoint for the community as in general. I think you're going to get higher values out of those homes. You're not going to get as many, the developer's not going to get as many. But the return on the investment for the individual buying them is going to be a better return.
So how do we, how do we come to grips with the one we approved to the north? I mean, I agree with you. I totally get it. I would rather see single-family one-story homes there as well, but.
Well, if you go to, if you go to a five thousand square foot lots or something like that. That transition between the medium high density and, you know, it's going to be there anyway. You'd have that same, you'd have that same transition in this between the medium density and the, and the P U D. You know, so what difference does it make if you make it on that line or if you make it on the north-south line? It's the same thing.
How do the rest of you guys feel?
This is Commissioner Holly. I agree with Brian. I, I'm, I just all these two-story townhouse things for two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I don't know. It's my opinion that if we keep approving these things, that's all we're going to have.
See, and, and this is probably not the form to do this, but I, but I still think if we look at our P U D requirements and, and change the setbacks a little bit. And make it so that our side setbacks maybe not so, are so much. Um, you know, go to a, uh, as, just an example, is a zero lot line on one side and a ten-foot lot or a ten-foot setback on the other side of a property. You still have ten feet between houses, but but you change the, the dynamics of how you can do parking and a few other things. But that's for when we get in a council session where we could actually talk about future planning and not necessarily right here. But in any case, I'll, I'll shut up because I'll go on for a half hour about this because it's a pet peeve, so.
It helps me, it helps me to hear it, just as another commissioner. For the Stuckey project, it was one level above this. And so that's why I had an issue with that is I don't want to go anywhere above what this would be the maximum, I would think. That I, I could see it there. I also understand your point and I agree with your point, but at the same time. Yeah, I, I can, I can see both, I guess, and I know where I'm going with it, but. Yeah.
I think we need to get back to the idea that we are talking about um, this general plan amendment and we need to decide where we're going with it. I'm sorry, but we've been distracted enough. I think we need to get on with it.
No, you're right, Commissioner Henry. Um, we can decide some of this stuff or not in a preliminary plat and so as we go forward with this. Isn't that right, Drew? We'll have our, our chance.
Well, you still have a zone change to go through.
I know.
So that's why I say you can hit that up more, you know, and, and it sounds like the one you're worried about is a P U D R. Is if I'm, if I'm reading right is what you said, you know, we have to vote on both of them.
Right.
Um, the P U D R, it's either going to be P U D R or medium high density. And you can get the same out of either one of those. Okay, the density is going to be the same. I think you're better off to leave it in P U D R. It gives you more flexibility at a zone change time. You go medium density across the whole thing. You don't have that flexibility. I can't go to a five thousand square foot lot in a medium high density. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I agree with that.
But in a P U D R, you can negotiate that stuff out. So I, you know, if you want my recommendation, I'd leave it as they're proposing it and work it out in the zone change and the subdivision processes.
Right, yeah, no, I understand that. I, I just, I'd like to see us get away from all these townhouses.
And I, I agree exactly with what you just said, Drew.
Yep.
Drew is, is the public hearing closed. Bob just, Bob just.
It's done.
Well, I would love to speak.
The applicant, but the public hearing's done.
He's still, he's still on the phone and he just, he's, I think he's still there.
Yeah, Bob, if you have.
Yeah, I'm still here.
Um, as we discussed and you want to, if you want to add in anything right now, you can. Um.
Okay. Commissioner. Yeah, I just, I guess what I just wanted to comment and just say I appreciate, I appreciate the thought process and uh, I'm happy to um, go back and look at it from a standpoint of basically having some smaller family, you know, detached units in there if uh, if that's a, a possibility in that, in that five thousand square foot range, you know, maybe, maybe we can make something work. We were we honestly, we're just trying to be consistent with the development plan to the north and just mirroring it. But if uh, if overall we came in and you know, in the uh, the lower area, if you will, on the, the medium density stuff, if we came in with R one six there and, you know, and did that, and then we came in with maybe just slightly smaller at the fives. Um, you know, maybe, maybe it works out. We haven't looked at that. We, we were just mirroring. And so our, our, our conceptual plans that we currently have are just with that, that thought process. So I'm happy to, to go back and look at that and see if it works. And if it does, and uh, we can bring that to you in the preliminary plat and, and, and have that flexibility as Drew's talked about with the P U D R. And uh, I'm happy to look at that and then uh, and then discuss it with you what the findings are.
Sounds good to me, fellas.
Yeah. Well, I'd entertain a, a motion on this. Um, or if you have further discussion, we can talk more, but.
Uh, we've closed the public hearing, haven't we, Jason?
Yes.
No, good. Well, if nobody else wants to make a comment. I will make a motion to recommend to the city council approval for G twenty oh three, a request to amend the general plan land use in the area located at approximately forty-three hundred south, seven hundred east from the current low density L D and open space to a new design, medium density and planned unit residential, general plan land use designation. Including recommendations. Okay?
I have a motion.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Question on the motion. Commissioner Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Holly?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick? Motion passes unanimously.
I just wanted to say one thing, you guys. I really appreciate your time. I'm gonna step off right now, but on the project itself, but also just going through the effort to to do the online uh, option here where we can go through and and go through your, continue with the planning commission and city council meetings. It's a, it's a really big deal for me personally, and I know through the food chain, right? As these projects move forward, it means a lot to a lot of people. So I just personally, I just wanted to say thanks for you guys putting forth the effort and willing to, you know, obviously try something new and keep the ball rolling. I I really appreciate it. So appreciate your time and and your thoughts and and that's all I've got for you. Thank you.
Thank you and thanks for being patient with us.
Yep, no problem. It's great.
Okay, with that, the I would look for a motion to close the meeting. Motion and
I'll second that, Commissioner Hanson.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioner Henry?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Holly?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
I am a definite yes. Just reminder, the stream will stay live, so the make sure that you're not saying anything that you don't want to be on record.
Gentlemen, I'd like to thank Drew and and everybody over at the city. This is, this is huge that we can, that we can do this. Because if we start shutting down planning commission and city council, I mean, then we're, we're so screwed. It's not even funny. So I I think it's, I think it's a real good, real good deal.
That too. I agree.
You said it before I could, Brian. Good on you. Good job, Drew, Brandon.
I, you know, I don't wanna take all the credit because I really want Steve and his staff over in our IS department are.
Exactly.
Yeah, working so hard.
Well, give give them a raise.
And Kathy, Kathy, thank you. Denise, thank you. Good job, ladies.
Great, and thanks.
You guys know how to jump out of here. Down on the bottom of your screen, you'll see leave meeting. That'll kick you out, so.
What are you trying to say, Drew?
Hey, thank you. Did you get it?